Yeah.
She says that's what you definitely, you do definitely.
On the sponsored posts in the social media, is that, what are sponsored posts?
It's just that we pay the, the money to ensure that it goes out, so if they follow us.
Yeah.
And it helps everything.
It's like a Google ad or whatever.
It's one.
Yeah, got it. Do you have many signed up for the plant? Hang on. Not that you know.
No one's giving me numbers.
No, I was just curious. The transplants and plants to bring in, I haven't signed up yet, so I was gonna say. Doesn't know if I'll make it. All right, I've got six o'clock on my computer, but the clock says that we still have a minute.
That was set by me as I was running around. It feels sick. Well, could be wrong.
It's all your fault, but, and, um, I don't see why we should wait on it. So I will go ahead and call this meeting to order since we do have a couple of six o'clock. I've got my laptop on one of my, uh, computer. Uh, I hope everybody's had a good October and November thus far. First order of business is to review the minutes from October, because everybody had a chance to read. And anybody like to improve minutes from?
It's from the October reading.
That's just Mark seconds. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Perfect. Nay? Is there anyone that's, yeah, no, okay. Can we get, can we get these earlier? Give them packets earlier? Uh, I know that with the Veterans Day, it was closed on Monday, but.
I can give you to the email. And then you will get it Thursday afternoon. You should get by Friday.
If I could get both, that'd be great. Do I have to be closer? Do I have to use my junior voice? Hey, that's, oh, yeah, you're right here though. Oh, Lord.
I think, frankly, if I'm wrong, part of the reason why we have to slow roll sending them out is because of the comment sign up thing. The agenda, make sure that we have a bunch of time to get everybody there.
Oh, okay, yeah, I know.
But maybe we can send out review notes shortly. As long as I get it, we get them. But when I was getting mailed, I had this.
Yeah, I got this like this morning, so it's like, but I did, I did email and he sent me the electronic from my car.
Yeah, I can, I can do Sonya's, it's the Friday before.
Yeah, if I could do both, that, yeah, that'd be great. Thanks. Yeah, absolutely. Sorry that that's happening to you. Oh, no, yeah. It's, yeah, the, well, there's a point in our meeting where we have discussion. But I'm assuming that those ones are in your director's report, so I don't know if you want to just go ahead and move into director's report?
Well, I mean, there's, it's for session, but there are things that need to be, uh, approved and voted on. Uh, so if we can move into that, that's, we didn't go to compensation. Uh, does everyone have a chance to see my recommended, recommended 0.5? Organization compensation plan? It, questions are, I, I, I ordered a 5% cost of living increase across board with two exceptions. We, uh, those, because of recent job changes, so there has been a adjustment already. Any questions on any other actual things we're updating, uh, got that to represent, we've, we've already included here. Uh, remind me how this plays into the, the exempt non-exempt discussions that we had earlier in the year. Are we, we're, we're back in the good cycle? Yes, so, yes, so I am the only one that is exempt at the process. No, yes. I know who we exempt. Everyone else is not exempted, so.
Exempt from what?
Taxes, uh, not taxes, but overtime.
I'm like, I'm against it.
How do I get that? Sorry, overtime. So early in the year, uh, the government made a, it's called the fire rule. Uh, but they did this every few years, but saying that if you don't make a certain amount of money, uh, you have to be non-exempt, be therefore allowed to accrue overtime. And at that point, we had made all the head of departments exempt. And so they could, you know, adjust times, but because of the salary requirements, we would have, it would have really bumped up all everyone's day. And so we moved them back to, so they are, they are eligible for overtime, but no one gets overtime. They adjust hours anyway.
Okay.
So definitely. Say, I'm trying to look at this question.
Um, on, on the spreadsheet you gave us?
Yes.
And you said, fourth from the bottom, Emily?
Yes.
It's a 0% increase, but it shows an increase.
Yeah, so, so the 1594 was her start of the year. And then when she moved up to the higher paid job, so that's why, and I didn't catch that thing.
Okay, so the higher paying job, she is at $17? Okay. Got it. And when was the last, uh, cost of living increase every year?
Last year we did one. I, before that, I'm not sure, but we did, uh, one last year. And I'm sorry.
Do you recall how much that was?
5%.
5%?
Yeah. And at that time, that was a little behind the, uh. Six. Yeah, yeah. So this is actually a little bit of a catch up.
So what is the possible thing for this year? Because I looked it up and there's social security, military retirees and disabled beds, it's 2.5%. So, you know, I don't know what it is for regular.
For my, that's correct. We also did just an increase of healthcare. Just like. So there's that to take into consideration as well.
And is there any reason why, uh, like somebody who's been working here for a lot longer is making the same amount as somebody who's been here not as long?
Uh, that probably has to do with the job classifications. I'm guessing, I don't know which ones you're referring to, but that's typically what it is, is, uh, you know, what job classification. They start out at, like, five years.
I just wasn't sure because I don't, it doesn't say which category they are on this one, so I didn't, I couldn't compare very well.
So last year you would had 5% COLA. And the rate Spencer, you thought last year was around 6, 6 and a half percent.
I vaguely recall.
That sounds correct.
I remember that we under, undershot. We definitely did.
And that doesn't take us out of our, our budget when doing it.
I looked at these numbers before, yeah, we did a budget still with them.
So was this included in the budget that we voted on last month? Is that?
Yeah, our, the budget that, that was approved, uh, and turned into the state. This number comes on a fat. So it's less than what we budgeted.
Okay.
Somewhat, yeah, generally, but I think we, I've even recently had people level service from, well, effective. Yes, that was, after contacts, we outsourced that. At some point in order to help use our account. So I wanted to make, yeah, make sure that there is the lower level.
I just want to make sure, clear my financial brain that, that this 5% increase basically was already budgeted for what we voted on last month.
It would be more than that. Yes, it's more than what, so, yeah. Budgeted for more than what this 5%.
It's just confusing to me that we didn't talk about it then, and, and I don't, I'm so new, I don't know when the timeline is, but.
I, I agree. I mean, I think, I think future considerations, we should probably decide if maybe we should do this. Like a tree or something, I think, maybe, so, but it feels a little bit, I, I know that you thought about it beforehand, so we already did vote on. And it is a kind of weird because I'm looking at the budget and I shared like June, July. So for passing the budget, the pay increase in June, July, we have six months before that. That's kind of why I was writing.
Right. It's just kind of, yeah, confusing in my brain. Thank you. Do you have any further questions or anything that want to discuss?
So we need a motion here.
Does that also include the increase we have to pay for FICA unemployment?
Those are other line items, so, on, on the budget.
That's what we were talking about a motion. Yeah, sorry, Spencer, I, I had to get that question in.
Check any, any pushback from our.
We did, all of these numbers are less than what we would, any of the budgets, it's under budget. Think it's a suspension.
It's good. Check it to, you guys could override me and give us more.
Or I could make a motion to say 4%, you know, I think everybody in the whole entire world would be happy to get 5% and they're not, so it's gotta.
Well, and, and I agree, but, but again, we were kind of behind where other places in the industry have been. So this is kind of, again, another catch up.
Because we knew we didn't want to do last year because that would put us at that budget line where almost. So to push that to a year of what we think.
Right.
And then.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, it's, yeah.
Understand a big budget.
I would also say, just for the sake of us at the table, that the staff is the biggest investment that we can make in the library. And I really do, and I know that this is just my opinion, something that the library is their greatest resource.
Yes.
Obviously, the materials are very important to patrons, it really is the, that is directing the collection. And that is giving them, the patrons, the attention that they need. And for some people, it's the only human interaction. So I do think that, even though obviously the numbers are big and are scary, it's probably the best thing that we could do.
Yeah, I agree. That's why I asked, why people who've been here longer, we're making kind of equivalent at, like Linda Craig is making pretty similar to Elizabeth Vern, and they've been here like 21 and a half years difference. But again, I don't know what their titles are, or, so. Yeah.
Yeah. I think these are all about, and I, and I do, I do think it's very important to be able to recruit and attract good.
Yeah.
I think that recent improvements in the children's area are very, very, uh, that points to why it's important to have a budget to get the higher good people.
Yeah.
That's done an excellent job. Obviously, she's one of our, our highest earners, but want to be able to continue. I think 5% is within our, within our funding ability at this point. I think for next year, it's going to be wise for us to evaluate the, the competition. Hate to look at other libraries, they are. Make sure that we're still in the practical range. So important to get people, but it's, so. We could, I am doing a compensation study, I don't know how long it will, but I'd say probably. Yeah. Oh, uh, yeah, that's something we could look into doing next year also. That wouldn't be a bad, yeah, I think, I think it's a good idea to do it.
We also do, if I'm wrong, uh, every year, I think it's probably in the new year, staff evaluation.
Where, possibly, right now.
Yes, okay. Well, Spencer, I'm just going to go back to you about that motion.
Uh, yeah, Spencer makes a motion to approve the aid schedule, the, the, we should approve the end of organizational compensation. In January 2025.
And I get a second.
First of second.
Seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? All right.
This is one that they were announced before, so.
Oh, fabulous, you're a fan again. I, I think I have them, but I brought my purse this time, they're rare. Uh, but we can move right along then. Uh, I know that the next thing that you want to discuss with the 2025 holiday.
Yep, and so I, I, these are, most of these are already in our policy, uh, our staff policy. And so there, I was bringing in a table, as you saw, I also included the, uh, half day staff training once a quarter, which you guys have generously allowed, obviously, which are going great, staff are really enjoying them, we're learning a lot, we're, we're building teams, which is good. Uh, the other thing I want to bring up and propose is currently, uh, Easter is a paid holiday. Just fine, but we're already closed now on Sunday, so we would be paying for a day that we're already closed. So my suggestion would be to move, change that from a specific date of Easter to a floating holiday that staff could use, kind of like PTO where they choose when they use those, those hours. Uh, and that would be, so you're, you're taking off a Thursday, and you know, they work 34 hours, so if they get paid for. Would be a full day, uh, be way normal, uh, hours for that day to be that, um.
I have a question on the holidays, because again, I have no clue. On November 26th, we close at 5:00 PM. Do, do they get paid holiday on that day, or?
Nope, we have slots.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So that, that plus about paid holidays in my case, and just the libraries. Yeah.
So can you name what the paid holidays are, just because I, I don't know?
So it's New Year's, Memorial Day, Independence Day, uh, probably Easter.
Okay.
Uh, then we have, uh, Thanksgiving, the two days are paid. Uh, and then Labor Day. Let's skip Labor Day. Oh, we did skip Labor Day, Labor Day, uh, Christmas and New Year's Eve.
Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and the day after.
Yeah.
So that's 11 holidays paid in here.
Yes.
And the board decided on this a long time ago, or I have no way, or?
Way before, but.
Yeah.
That was, um. Six, Greg.
Mm-hmm. He's not here, so why not?
No, um, that was with Mary when we were doing those pieces.
Sure.
Going through that.
Okay, well, I love the staff, but I'm going to say I think 10 paid holidays is great. Instead of 11, instead of Easter.
Sure. So we would have, that would be a done thing where we would have to go into the staff policy and change the samples.
Yep. Thanks. And, and you have to understand, my background is teaching. You don't work, you don't get paid. Um, so I, I, I understand, I do want what's best for our staff, but that's a lot of paid. Not a lot of places do you get Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and the day after paid for. So I think 10 paid holidays is enough, but that's one vote, sorry. That's, I think, that's one discussion, yeah. Everyone has a place at the table, so thank you for sharing your opinion, and that, that's fine. Um, but are we wanting to put it to a vote?
So the thing that would be voted on today would be the.
The closing holiday upcoming.
Easter, but we keep that as a paid holiday as is on that day, or we change it to a floating holiday. Change that big. That, so, uh, and then. Can you, can we amend the, and discuss the, the closing date, or the, that part of the staff policy? Now, I think that has to be, wait till next month. Technically, need to be done on next month. That's why, that's why I just wanted to get a confirmation, put someone in to do that this month.
Because it's not only a, yeah, for this month, so we could, but it has to be, yeah, so we could just, what we could do today is on this list, if there's any of these days we do not like, be closed on those dates, that's what we would vote on. The other one would be in the policy that we have to check. And that would be on the agenda. Only if we have to stick to them.
Right.
So there are ones that you would like to line item on those, we can definitely amend this part for the 2025 holiday, but it can't be. Because that is on the agenda, yes.
Yep.
Whereas if we table and do it all next.
Yeah, if we table it, just have some conversation.
I just don't, I fear, you know, if people need more time to think about it and what you think is best.
Well, we have to definitely look over policy, make sure that's right for the employee policy and handbook.
Right.
If that, we can't have them in conflict.
Yeah, I mean, technically, we'd be, we'd be taking away.
Correct.
Because that, which would, yeah, granted, they don't, they don't work on this year. Things that we, that, that part of the agreement is also.
That's why you were saying it's that holiday, we already got all paid holiday, but now this library is closed already on Sundays for what we did.
Right.
Thank you, months ago.
So I, I guess you could, thinking of this, if it was society that 10 wasn't on, you could just not move the floating holiday and just also run Easter as a model of paid holidays. And since library is already closed, yeah.
Yeah.
Does someone want to make a motion? We can also table it.
Move it to table until next month, so we can get our other piece, make sure that our policy is discussed as well, that way we don't have a big conflict.
Yeah. First motion to table, third second.
Second.
Second. Uh, all in favor? Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Perfect. We're going to table this and be on next month's list. Moving right along in the director's report, I'll give the, the mic back to Mike. I won't use it again.
Yes, it was preused by how, I mean.
I'll take it.
Uh, so we've had lots of good things going on, uh, throughout the building, lots of programming, uh, we finished a lot of projects. Lots of bits of some of those parts that were, uh, in, in the process have completed, uh, still working on some others. Uh, we have been surveying the community on what they want for programming. Uh, that has been going on for a couple of months now, and it was an online survey, also some paper reports. Uh, we're at the point where we, the response has kind of stopped. Uh, I think it's 74 last I looked, and today, so we, since I sent this out, we had a. Uh, so we're going to move into the analysis phase. Use those results to determine how often, what type of programming, those activities for the company. Uh, to hopefully ensure that we are providing the community with programs that they want, uh, and then that will be successful, uh, attendance. Right now, we, we have some that are really good, uh, attendants, very well attended, but, uh, others that we think will be attentive and that, you know, shows up, so sorry. Right now, we're just, uh, we need to start opening in two, three, four. Numbers to that, some make determinations. Um, as requested by the board, we did have a meeting with our healthcare rep, even to let our last staff meeting and talk to make sure everyone's aware of it. If there's someone available to, may, introduce a question to them, so. Some, some words, surprised at some of the benefits that they had access to that they didn't realize they did. As mentioned, just a few minutes ago, we are in the process of doing staff evaluations. Have those, the, everyone does a self-evaluation, the supervisor does an evaluation, and then we have us, you know, each to discuss, and as that meeting is more about setting goals for the year. If there's any concerns that, um, may have come up that are not discussed or, uh, keeping that up, but I am, I think, deliver that. It's only your, any evaluation. As soon as possible, so they're very low key evaluations, because it's about, we want to talk to them. We did have a staffing change. Dara, uh, was one of our librarians, and she took a full-time position in our pain. So she has left. We were able to, uh, hire someone, and she started one day. So we have Anadelle just started to speak. That position, so we are again, um, full staff. Means we're not all just. Um, as mentioned, the building projects are processed, there was a question last month about, but some of those projects are. Uh, they're going to have a table in the back, at the back of that outline, slows, uh, and these were all. Actually with NKM, trying, while we were looking at potential bond, what we could do. So we're taking, since we did not go after bond, this, we are going to view, uh, doing projects as we can with our budgeting. Anyone having questions about any of those projects?
How were all these projects decided upon? They were just, um, suggestions from NKM and?
Then, so there was, uh, the Solus study was gone, looking at our equipment, that was actually done on the 18th, and then updated, so, uh, some of that, there, uh, some of the stuff was just in vain, suggestions. A lot of conversations, myself and staff, about what we wanted, what we, uh, wanted to lay out, so, so. Yeah, some of these have been in form for quite a while, the, the, the infrastructure stuff, yeah, same.
So because they were in the study, then that means they're, um, were they, were they boy, or voted on? I don't know how we, we came across that we're having all of these to be done. Does that make sense?
That's a big reason why they were discovered, some people want voting in the bond.
Mm-hmm.
There was, uh, it wasn't necessarily clear how many of these were. It wasn't necessarily clear how many of these were So they decided not to pursue the bond until we figured out some. Which ones do we still want to go after and things maybe aren't applicable anymore or agreed priorities? Some of these, like the infrastructure ones, the, uh, economizer, the controls, that has to do a lot with, uh, and life up there.
Sure. Makes, makes sense. I guess I just wasn't sure why, um, number four and a number five priority was completed before the avenue controls to mechanical equipment that they booked same and Is it budget or?
Low, low cost, high impact. So it's managing, it's, uh, pulling, uh, Uh, seven thousand for the three pounds out of budget, a lot of you do three hundred thousand.
Sure. There was this eighty thousand spent on the teen lounge and the reading room, and that was the price for the mechanical equipment. I don't know when their end of life is and
Well, we had a leak that we had to get fixed. It's like we were redoing that piece anyway. That was just the best spot to use that. We're doing a game room.
That makes sense. Yeah, I, I just
Yeah, some of the, some of the prioritizing was about paying for the park. You know, how much of the impact is something starting to happen to others too.
Sure.
For any and impact of the park.
Exactly. I recall as well, the board was able to, when we were brainstorming about maybe what we were going to do, I don't know that you were appointed director yet. But we had like a wish list that you were able to create a place.
No, it's a big time. It came into this plan halfway, did it?
Yeah. And pick up someone else's ranks.
But I think, I think your product point stands. So like It's awesome that you're able to get some stuff and we should probably reconvene on strategically, what are the possible Make sure we're doing, the, the controls Probably need done at some point. We should probably stop taking the can down. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I have, I, I have reached out to Did the study and probably have a meeting in, uh, to get this separate talking about me. Just to make sure pricing was updated, went up.
Thanks.
Can anybody tell me about the age of this building now?
It really turned out, actually that's one, yeah.
Fully.
Yeah.
I think it's
Twenty-three, twenty-four years.
And then the basement was refilled and finished later.
That's If I'm remembering my dates right.
And air handler issues and things on them.
Sure.
And the boiler, like boiler recently, just pointing to that was on the list.
You can also
Right, yeah.
Also
Gutters were bad.
Yeah. But weren't they all replaced?
Yeah, gutters replaced. And you did that for less than sixty thousand. Yes. And that's, that's the other thing to consider here. These numbers, the ones that weren't discontinued didn't necessarily cost. Yeah, they estimated. Yeah.
Okay, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, I included the N K M's, uh, I N estimates
Okay.
On, on the website shared. I have a different one. I started to
Yeah.
Was the roof replacement on this one? Because it was on the original.
It was on this one that it was on this. Okay.
Yeah, that's our, the roof, the roof Right. Big problem and that is going to be very large sum of money. You're at a one point two or one point three million to have the roof redone. And we, the contractor and company that came in to guarantee they see what affects it and they did. And that was, oh my gosh. Fantastic.
Savings.
Yes.
Sure. That, but the gutter combination, we're like, whoa.
Yeah, the gutter, yeah, we were supposed to. They got their, what did I estimate that'd be?
Sixty.
Yeah, that was what you had the, they were at the company. Thirty-six, nine.
Yeah, yeah.
And we paid for that out of brand.
So do we get bids for all this stuff or, yeah, like the carpet removal that we paid ten thousand for that was bided work or?
That, it was, yes. The, the, I got it. Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions on those projects?
No, I would like to figure out if we can re-prioritize based on what you're seeing is needed now, like the equipment, the Mechanical equipment. I mean, that's, some point if you don't fix that, then you have a bigger cost.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. But it is a huge, it is a scary sticker, sticker shot.
Yeah, so one of the conversations we had, I remember, um, actually down like, we had that conversation. It was, if you're replacing now, all the technology five to seven years from now, it's going to be less expensive to operate later on than it is right now.
Right.
I talked to you for five, seven years.
Yeah, I know. We have
It's inflation, inflation or inflation rising faster than the technology is going to change.
Right. And then some of the things we were using were controls, outdated, they no longer service. So that's one part.
Yep.
We have to update, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was asking because we have rental properties and we run into that all the time. I just don't want to have building damage. Thanks.
Uh, so the next item on, uh, that was a discussion about the collection developments, overview of things. I, I know None of them, but we do have fewer board members. So, uh, I want to make sure that everyone's aware of how our practices, what our practices are and how we come to Develop our collection. Uh, collection development is just the process of us adding materials to our, to our shelves and then also taking Girls off, uh, And we use, uh, reviews and recommendations and requests from patrons to decide what we put on. We look at The titles that have checked out, uh, very well. We look for those authors again, uh, those type of things, uh. It's, uh, so Katie and Kelsey, the head of adult services and services, they Make these selections monthly. Uh, they use little tools, uh, Publisher, uh, help out type things with properties and professional magazines where things are evaluated, viewed. So looking for the, the materials that's going to have, provide us the broadest, widest selection For our community and meet their needs once, uh, best quality, uh, you know, well, uh, there's A lot of times we run into where we get a lot of, uh, Patron requests, they'll be self-published mixes on. And we don't find a lot of those, but we will go back to the, they should say. Not going to get this specific one, but here's something similar that has a really good review and lots of people read it and, you know, so we're trying to meet that need. But we don't want to fill our collection with things that, you know, that we looked at once. So we're trying to balance that, but Um, our collection development is actually de-selecting and reading. So going through our materials, things that haven't checked out for a while, uh, things that are Rubby or don't look nice or beat up or poor or, or just dirty, taking those materials off the shelf. Also things that are outdated, you know, Like a media set that's running two thousand, it's not, it's very valid. So we'll get picked off or medical books or evil things are outdated. Um, So we, we remove those and that helps make space for your items as well as make sure that we are finding things that are going to be used to, oops. And it, it makes the shelves look better, more appealing and To show that we have a more appealing shelves, they, that look nice, things should look better. So even if it's Even if it's stuff that's older, but still looks good, it'll circulate before something that's brand new, but it doesn't look better. It's the shelves too bad. So balancing all those things.
What is library IQ?
Library IQ is an analytical tool, uh, that we have access to through Evergreen Indiana. Uh, and it looks at, uh, statistical, uh, analysis, uh, circulation, population of the community. Uh, it looks, it has information from, uh, consumer, uh, purchasing. So we have a good representation of what our demographic looks like In our service areas like that. So we know what we can provide for the, the, the people that are Helps to educate those things. But these are all tools that are used by library, professional libraries. Those, that's why I said, uh, Michael says, so a book might not Checked out in ten years, but it's in good condition and it's a classic that is, if it, he might still want.
There's also some value in, um, the needs of the evergreen circulation, correct? They will take that into consideration, but other libraries have that are, that our patrons have access to.
Exactly. So if there's a really popular book that's coming out and we find that there are already A lot of copies of Evergreen repurchase, we might not purchase it. But if there's another title, that, that means that we didn't spend money on something that maybe not as popular. But, uh, or just as popular, I should say, but not a lot of other libraries have it. So it's balancing that as well. But rather It allows us to make some of those
Being a process as well that No, it's the damaged books. I remember we had the, uh, The person that came in and showed us about the, the bug.
Yeah. Yes, yes. Yeah. So if it's, if it can't be cleaned, uh, or sanitized and If there's health issues, we're not going to keep it. Uh, Also, another thing that, um, you know, in this material selection is things that are reports that are lost or missing that should be on, should, should be on the shelf. But they're not, we might replace that especially Uh, Which Uh, Leads, leads me down a little bit of a rabbit hole, but, uh, There are times when items maybe May not be wanted by an individual. So they could take it and hide it elsewhere. But we didn't get a request for that item. We didn't buy it again. It's an hour back then. So people, they come in here that are, that And, and I just hear, this is the library wide problem, uh, in, in library industry part where people either they're Don't like a book, so they take it or make it so other people can't have it by hiding it or Feeling it and then it's requested or we find it on a list that's not there. It's new. So we buy it again. So we're, then, then end up paying twice for books that they're trying to get rid of.
Karma, the largest thing.
Which is, and I mean, we, we had, I was, a, a couple of games recently, uh, where I found games that we had just, uh, repurchased. I found stuff on top of shelving that was, I was So
Do we have like good hiding spots in the library? I'm just wondering if there's like a common place for like, oh yeah, everyone always puts this in the encyclopedia because it's hard to tell.
People tend to put stuff on like the tall shelves or behind, uh, other books and things like that. So
Do we have video cameras to catch those people?
Oh, yeah. If I don't have to look for it. You, I mean, that is on video, but if I know what's happening, I can't.
Right. So I don't know what to look for.
Yeah. The other, uh, Aspect of collection development and, uh, Getting the processes, the requests should be considered, uh, process which is part of that. Uh, so if there's items on the shelf that an individual, uh, As far that, uh, a library card holder in, in our service area finds objectionable, makes objectionable, they can't fill out a form, they submit that form. We go through a process to evaluate if it's going to stay in the shop. And as I made you all aware, we did have one recently, we did decide to The request was not to get rid of the book. The request was to move it from Section to another section and moving it from, uh, moving an early aisle reader to a teen area did not make sense. There's then people that were looking for it, but not find it. And, and then you're, it just, it did not make sense to people. So we decided to keep that regardless.
And this is a decision that's made by a committee, correct? The, of individuals in the library.
Yeah. So, uh, it's, it's decided, it's, it's not, it's not a standing committee. So this time it was myself. I'm always part, the director is part of it. Uh, and the head of the department that the book or material resides in is part of it. And then other, other, uh, team members or staff members ask, uh, I, I choose, I chose another staff member, actually circulation who wasn't involved in the process. So she, and then know anything about blood. So she was a outside observer. Uh, and, and so she was able to give a different Way to you. And patrons still have the The ability to Object. Yes, they, they, so yeah. So when we made the decision, we, uh, I sent a letter to, uh, the Individuals that made the request and they Uh, or if like maybe that's one, kind of through their
We have had those requests meet the board, at least in my time. I have, we have seen those. Has every, has everyone been involved in that? Yeah, I know. Probably your first time.
I knew.
Yeah.
Oh, we had some come, but I don't think ever. Team.
Okay.
I think they were resolved. Last one.
I remember the last time it came on the board, it was still with Mary and it was a list and we went through, we voted each.
There were a couple of times which we had requests from last year, situation, they Out. Yep.
Yes.
We have to be in Which does the rest.
So can I ask why, um, my concern, one concern is with the committee that's deciding this. Um, I don't think a direct line supervisor and their subordinate should be on this committee.
And that was
Okay. So the head of the department, you aren't their direct line supervisor?
Oh, sorry. I thought you were talking about I thought you were talking about the head of this department, like two people from the same department.
Yeah, no, because I, I'm, and here's my concern with that. Cause you know, with military background, you know, if you disagree with the head of the department and they're the ones that purchased this book, Then, then who do they go to? Because
They go to you.
Yeah.
That, that would be in a situation where we were. And I, I am not a dictator. I, I don't open to staff's opinions and thoughts and stuff. But yeah, it's like they have every disagreement or they don't feel that I'm listening or that we can come to an agreement.
And this is why too, the board is always notified. There's, there's not ever a time where we wouldn't know that there's been a Okay. That's, that's how it has been in the past. And that's why I'm looking to give you the links there.
Yeah.
Go back. Yeah. Okay, so.
Okay. So I, I miss that in the literature then because I thought it only came to the board. If the committee did not resolve the issue or not come up with the decision.
Sorry. Let me clarify that. We're just made aware.
We don't, we don't get to vote on it.
Right.
So it will come here, we actually will vote if they can to, or if they appeal. Uh, otherwise Could that answer your question?
Well, that's not in your online policy. It, I didn't know that, that they could appeal this if they wanted to and bring it. Cause on page twelve, it doesn't mention that. Just because I was ignorant, I went online and read all this off because I don't So you might want to update that.
I had the same concern as Angela did with the committee. Cause it seemed like You were the director.
I know. I, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you. I definitely think if we're going to be looking at policy, we should definitely put that on then for the next one.
Yeah.
Month meeting as well.
Okay.
To figure out for that, so we can see, um, any wording that you would want on those, anything like that.
Right.
Be a good idea to have that on the agenda next month.
Yeah.
Do any policy change?
Right.
That would be a good idea. That's a really good idea.
Fresh eyes are always important.
Fresh eyes are always important. We appreciate your questions.
And here's my other concern for the policy is this is the appendix D request for reconsideration that's online. But this is the one that's being handed out upstairs. So we have two different.
So and that we figured that out. And then this week or last week.
Last week when I came in. So was it this new one?
Because the one that's newest has talks about programs also. They mentioned programs as what you're up to. Right, because we, we, we approved that change.
Yeah.
Recently. There was no real request for reconsideration.
This is the one.
This is, this is the most. Program or uh.
Okay, so was this the copy that was given to the individual that requested? Because I don't think it was because I've kind of been contacted by them and I think it was this one.
It was that one.
So why weren't they given the one online?
Because there was a mistake made at this.
Okay, so.
Because they had them print off that's what they thought, so they, they. Because they don't happen all the time.
Yeah, absolutely.
So they, they went to the, their folder to grab it online, but then not realized that they had updated.
Okay, because when I came in last week and asked for, for these, I was given this one and I said, that's not the one that's online. Where's that? And the board lady at circulation desk couldn't find it. So Katie printed it off. But that's kind of my concern is, is we need to, yeah, make sure that's updated up there because.
Okay, so that's the thing.
Yeah. Because the one that was used made the individual write down something positive about the book. And then I feel like that was used against the patron in your letter back to them. Saying teaches kindness and acceptance, uh, but on this form that they're supposed to pull out, it doesn't, it doesn't ask that same question. So I'm just concerned about what data we're using. Does that make any sense?
I don't want to speak for Mike, but it sounds like there was just a mistake, possibly a miscommunication since it has been resolved. If you want us to reach out to the patron that had the request for reconsideration and just explain the mistake and apologize for it, I would be more than happy to help you. It was an honest mistake. We don't ever want to put a patron or make them uncomfortable.
I'm just concerned about the process if we're saying.
It sounds like Mike is saying that the process has been updated. So we're glad that you brought this forward. It sounds like it's been resolved.
So the process and writing back to the patron has, is that going to stay the same where we're using? Uh, some of their words. What they uh, like about the book against them?
A question, question.
Yeah.
I remember seeing that, that they wrote those things out voluntarily on that paper.
On the one that they.
No, no, they did that on their voluntarily. I don't mind that if we use that as a context of a response to them, because if they wrote it. They're writing a report to write any of those pieces. Now I get that part. Um, the issue is they were giving them wrong form by mistake.
Correct.
Now I hear what you're saying.
Right.
Using anything that they write down on that as a response to them, I don't have a problem with it. They wrote it down.
I don't, don't think that it fundamentally changed the answer. Since uh, I think you had.
Yes.
Requested by a specific patron. Or other collection guidelines. Process is in place to, to make sure that we're reaching a wide variety. So, uh, we process got it.
Right.
If, if it had fundamentally changed our decision, I would have a. And correct me if I'm wrong, maybe it did. My feeling based on what I've seen. Did not. But yeah. And that the individual retains the right to appeal to us.
Correct.
I'm more, I think that's better. I'm more concerned that when we as a board made that change.
Yeah.
It wasn't readily available or in the correct folder when it needed to be up at the desk.
Right, yeah.
Because that part, like you said, it would have immediately, that part, when you're doing that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I'm going to go on record that I looked at the book and I, I, I did not. Read the whole book because, and I know we're supposed to look at the book as a whole. That's the current law. I looked at. The signs that were in the book as a whole. And it, they're, those are adult-like messages of activism in a children's book. So I can see why the patron requested that it would not be in a three to six-year-old. Um, because some of the comments on those signs. I, I asked my thirty-year-old son, could you explain these to your kids if they walked in the library and picked up the book? He, he didn't know what half of them were. So, so those are pretty adult messages as a whole, looking at the book of activism. So that, that's my objection to this book. That's one in on record.
Thank you for your info. That is everything besides the electric cost of consumptions on the director's report. Do you have anything to use because they wanted to buy top of the electric cost?
Nope.
If that's the case, then I hope everyone has had the chance to review the other um, highlights from the department. But next on our agenda is the claims. And claims can be found on page twenty-seven. You're welcome. I always have my own complaints and then of course, I'm, I really want to try to do this. Without printing papers, but thanks for making this. So.
And I thank you for the nine activity kits that were put together. Those look amazing. Hi, Kristy.
I love our libraries. And they're made in Spain.
Yeah.
Has everyone had a chance to review the claims?
Each, sorry.
I like that. It's nice. This journal is good.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah.
It's way easier than the shortcut. I know.
All right, the databases, it's a, hoopla advance, is that advance like we're prepping or advance like we're getting advanced mode of. It's a nine thousand dollar, I think number six thirty-one on page. So that is for our purchasing. Okay, that's all. Get it. No advanced mode.
Oh, good. Thank you. So that's for next year, you said? Okay, thanks. Because I, it says that for month, oh, yeah.
No, but so.
Next year.
Uh, if you remember hoopla is by usage.
Yeah.
So we have to be buying bulk, ounces and like that, we go through that.
And if I recall, last month was one of the first months ever that we actually bumped out of the usage because of the British Office being available on hoopla now. Does that still exist?
Is that hoopla or that?
Yeah. Obviously me too.
It does, it does raise the point though, uh, in the department notes, there are a lot of databases in here that are not good training use. And I don't know what our payment is like on those individual ones. I know you had it on your to-do list.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's the answer will be, next month will be looking at.
Okay.
Databases. But some of those are like in social, so I wanted to have where, if it's like a cable bundle, you can't actually.
On page twenty-six.
Thirty-seven.
On twenty-six, that three point six one building and structure repair. I looked at that two pages back and it's the same three point six one, but it's a different number. Am I just confused? It could be for different things. I just don't know.
So I'm sorry, I'm on. Between point three and point.
Yeah, yeah.
So point three, you're looking at the budget and what's. What's the year, what's the date, what's been spent this month, what's covered, what's remaining?
Yeah.
Twenty-six is what we spent this month.
Well, twenty-three, it says this month we spent six thousand and on twenty-six, it says this month we spent ten thousand, but. Am I reading that wrong?
Sorry, what, what line I missed?
On twenty-three, it's three point six one, building and structure repair. Says this month, six thousand sixty-one. And then on page twenty-six, the same thing, three point six one says we spent ten thousand five hundred. I just don't know. Just because they're labeled the same number, I, I wasn't sure why they were did that.
Oh, oh. Twenty-six.
Yeah.
Is a different part. That's our, that is our rainy day part. So there's also a, a blind item for that. For that. So. Twenty-three came out of our general operating part, twenty-six came out of our.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah, I did not look up at the top.
No, that's okay. I just.
Because it's numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
Same name, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Chris.
And that's just for the. And I.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Any other questions? What's a library market?
Library market is uh, our calendaring software. These are for program calendar, room, room booking.
Yep. Oh, yeah, I get it. Online. Thank you. Good. Do I have your motion? It's not a motion, Angela. I don't even know what I'm making a motion for.
To approve the claim, sorry. You approve the claims in your monthly, sorry.
Oh, hey, I made a motion to approve the monthly claims.
Okay.
Joel seconds. All in favor?
Bye.
Any opposed? Perfect. The monthly claim passed. Then I will remind the room, this is the part of the library meeting where if we had someone that was wanting to address the board, this is. Where they would do so. Um, there is an online process for that and it needs to be submitted on. Um, that happened, so we do not have any uh, speakers today. And with that, we have completed our agenda. So if someone desires, we can move to adjourn or we can just adjourn.
I would like to approach you with your.
I'm sorry, I have, I have one thing I'd like to talk about, and that was on the book. Has everybody seen the book in question, looked at the pages of it or online or anything?
On the pages of it? Not the whole thing.
Not the whole thing. Uh, is everybody familiar with the uh, one page that seems to be mostly in question? With two men holding each other, one in leather, um.
Thank you, Sarah.
A leather um, bondage outfit.
I do have to look. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, in Mike in, in your letter uh, to the person that filled out the request for reconsideration. Uh, it says that similar attire can be encountered on public streets, beaches or pools or other venues. That are not in sexual nature. I don't believe that we're going to walk down the streets of Columbia City or anywhere in public. And, and see somebody wearing it in, in public.
I, I have seen things like this in public.
Okay. Columbia City?
Not Columbia City.
Okay.
I also have always been working in Columbia City. Here.
Okay. All right. Um, yeah, I just, I was like, just. Looked at that and I'm like, hey, well, that's, that's different. You, you must be in different, I mean, different cities or whatever, uh, you know, versus. Our community here. So, and that's not, that's not an attack on you. I just wanted to know. If where you, I guess where you had seen that or, I, you know, I guess big cities, I guess.
I mean.
See it.
Uh, uh. Three Rivers Festival. The all type of visuals and all types of pretty.
Okay.
Done worse than what, many worse than what's on. And then it.
Okay. Uh. Okay. Well, I stand corrected because I have never been to Three Rivers Festival. So, um, so thank you for bringing that up. So. Uh, that's all I have.
So is that a motion to adjourn?
Um. Yes, I'll make that a motion to adjourn.
Perfect. Joel motions to adjourn. Do we have a second? Thank you, everyone. Uh, I think the next meeting is.